Tell him when you ask him if you can marry his daughter. He says, "Sure. See those girls over there? I'll do anything in the world to protect them, but I don't mind if they go back to prison." Brad, I've never heard anybody else on the plane.
I didn't know it. Somebody put something on Facebook and then I read that out there.
What a queen. Name of the last state? She played music with him, didn't she? Hello. Makes you feel at home, right?
I didn't realize that was Sherry Rose.
AM, I might notice Megan was on post as a matter of course. Stan, Special Roger. We just ask you to be with us today. I just ask you to bless those present. God direct us as we end up county business. Work your will in our lives. Christy Cressis is here.
And thank you for your... ...grandson. Since that day, we have been putting my jacket... Concentrate on the grant. That we're going to be able to do a proclamation for Nance County. And get awareness out to families. Is what we wanted to help it keep it from happening again and... We're going to have... We're going to have... Because we're going to have a big water slide out there. We're going to have different churches, have different booths out there and they'll be, you know, sharing information from their church as well, but they will be doing, it's required. Assists that will be... The marine enforcement. Palopinto Sheriff's Office, the Brazos River Authority, the... Wardens. They're all going to be there as well. Stimulate if you have an accident, what happens if you don't have a seatbelt? Then Destin Derrick will be there. But we are part of the National Safety Voting Council and we're part of Steadcase, Tarrant County, they have adopted us and so we're going to be giving water safety tags that will encourage people when they take children to the lake. Their responsibility to watch the children. There so that could be on their phone. To help keep... The grant, the lifeguards will be out there that day. The city pool is going to be there. That have been donated and there's just different things like that that will be, you know, like we are going to have three different speakers that day and my... Even though this is... Allow God to show blessing out of them and he has already and so we just want to touch families that day. That's what our, that's what our goal. Oh, and we are going to be giving, sorry, we are going to be giving the plan is to get out at least... And I'll get the life jackets too. That those are going to children.
Mayor and council, they kind of took this same proclamation at my last meeting.
They get it, they signed it. So we appreciate.
County Texas. Left with a beautiful river. Water activities on. Avoid accidents which can cause injuries or even drowning. Remembering White Dale Water Safety Act. Each May, an awareness campaign is conducted to remind all of us of this important issue. It is every Texan's responsibility to be informed about proper water safety. Turning a negatively unencouraged positive long-lasting occurrence. That's picture. I'm going to ask Christy, she'll be right behind my chair here. You all, Mr. Get around here pretty close. I have on the gentleman. You know it's great. Good. And then... That, I don't know where you received it.
Yes, we got it.
You have received $4,641.06, our proportion of the... Off.
A lot more flow than the...
Yeah.
More road damage.
All of them. That is placing these in form. About, not in my house.
Yeah, it was really... Probably they opened all the voting.
I believe it was on Sunday. I believe that lake was at 48 percent 10 a year ago, it was at 12 percent. It's 13 feet low. I don't know how many gates are left open on Posse King, but they have, they may have all, all of their gates down for a while.
Brass still needs to...
Yeah, still don't, but they're really good.
I think they just opened 380 of their runaway bay. They'll get a certainty of five, this time they got in the stores.
And up in the main parking lot went over 380.
Yeah.
Over the bridge.
Yes. That morning, about least a morning, it was already coming up on the bridge and they still let them pass through. And then before the day is over, they closed the road and the water just don't look good on stores, particularly in stores.
Seen lamps, it's been off for a while here, kid.
Yep.
If nothing further, we'll move to item number four, Consider County Clerk's meetings from previous meetings, but the April 11th regular meeting and April 14th special meeting, so the second. That was a pretty good meeting on... Excuse me. State, ground area. Few county judges. Our health authority, representatives of our health authority, Roddy Atkins.
Do you have any follow-up, Rodney?
I haven't. He kind of moderated the lady. Lot of discussion, lot of good discussion. Kind of hot. For Bob. Nice to know about it.
I'll tell you.
Representative Springer was here personally and then there were representatives from Estes's office and James Frank's office. I don't believe anybody from Perry's office was here.
You know, I think some of that may take extreme prioritized. Prioritized. Outside, have been on the... Figuring I asked a little more about what... Yes. The jail, it's not going to be that much cost. It's, uh...
The paper. Like you said, with the picture for the prospective, many meetings, past five of them. Consider treasure financing report.
I presented them to y'all. There's not anything earth shattering in there. Everything's looking good. I really am, so we don't have to put any money in the insurance fund.
Isn't the difference set a certain speed?
Yes, we'd be hard putting some of that.
How's the insurance thing going?
Good.
Going along smoothly?
They don't come to us with problems. We can, you know, there's so much we can do.
Fortune of the insurance company.
Flames from Tac or Blue Cross.
Been real complex.
Your office, we get it all done.
Do you mean you think the path is a little mistaken?
Well, that I've, that I've had to pay back. Two charges, maybe five or six.
Five.
Please, yeah.
That's good.
So, yeah, it hasn't been... We were discussing though at the end of the, comes the end of the year, we'll have to pay the people back that haven't met the 15th. Thing over the... And I, I don't know, Marcia gets a report, I think once a month that we did that.
We're paying off a report or we're paying off the EOB?
We're paying off the report that Tac sends us.
So if they have a EOB that shows that they paid their full deductible?
Yes.
You match it against your next report and get it verified?
So Marcia's keeping a spreadsheet on that, do we pay and we was getting close and...
And we did get some more payment money, but is that still questionable or?
Yeah, they were supposed to, they did. Spicy maps. I totally... We didn't, it was, that was one that just, like, we're looking at like kids and...
All right, we'll read to you just like you.
And the sales tax is still a bit down, but it was 10,000 more than the last one, so it was 73,000 or something.
How was that? All current taxes and things.
We're still getting a little more. We're 114,000 over.
So this time last year, we'd already turned...
Are operating all kinds.
Entertaining motions that'll throw the financials towards, say so. All papers. Okay, consider.
General is 72,688.86.
It's a real bill of balance. It might make a plea, nobody didn't...
No, I keep an eye on the eight, we have 800 and some dollars now right now. Bill's rolling in.
I forgot about one.
Yes.
Sorry. All papers, proof of finance. Yeah, I don't know, if there's nothing else, Cheryl, you need to write it.
No, okay.
I don't know whether it paid that quick or not, whether he's got that close, even though that's... Try to get our estimate back as soon as possible.
Certified by certified July.
Excuse me?
Certified by certified July.
Uh, July 50th, I believe. Certified by July. Boye Bonds, Megan Dawson, Allen County Attorney's Office, 5,000. Theresa Kilpatrick, District Clerk, 5,000, and Marina Quetter. Still need a district clerk. Got a motion for commission, while he's taken by commission sites to approve the bonds and designated all the bases now. Item number eight, requesting reimbursement, Brad Marsden. Brad agreed to go to downtown Houston to assist in that endeavor with their livestock people. He's submitted a statement for 1,716 dollars and I think that's, I believe it's in fact here, what, five days?
I want to understand why we're still paying him. We've got two other guys.
Well... Took twice before everybody came on down.
Okay, please. I'll say please. That should be the last one on the bank.
We weren't paying anybody out of that bond.
Second on there.
But he had ceased to bond with the...
Yes.
I bet there's probably is enough time to clean up the next one again.
All the paper?
Yeah.
Okay. That probably the last lap of the... I think that livestock show was over the weekend, more than... Just started. Okay. Acknowledged letter approving, item number nine, is acknowledged letter approving successful designation of the countywide polling place program. You have a copy of that, I believe, in the, in your package. I received that, I believe, on... Or, which, or, or it could be in 18 last week. Very successful county, indicating that we may continue on with the use of that countywide polling place program. We'll have to approve our polling places as we normally do. Reporting on that, I believe, question samples. Note that early voting started today for the school, city, hospital district.
Sound like we're going to be asking making funds on early going too.
Excuse me?
We'll be asking making funds on early going too.
Yeah, Rob is open, yeah. We'll just make note, we acknowledge that. I don't think there's necessarily any action. That letter's a little bit vague, Senator. Secretary of State, that we did not need to reapprove use of that program to continue on. Okay, item number 10. Discuss Wichita Falls in late contract. I haven't got that contract back from Wichita County yet, but I have been able to discuss it a little bit with Judge Gossett Thursday, more days. I'm not sure. Round the same page. We'll follow up with that, there is a little bit more information. For Judge Voges. Uh, I say forty-eight dollars, that's what they charge the learning program charges, uh, in these cities around. In their jail, that's what they're charging for that. Money has held a few bridges, they have held a few bridges at the same time, we have for Wichita County, all over. And language art. They don't have a job we do, no, because. Places to follow up on that, since I get to, to it gossip. He's going to go shake on. Figure he has people, I, and I haven't asked you this, but it costs him, helps work. I'll move, we'll table that issue from time to time. Pass five zero group of type. Spits, two thousand eleven, cap over greater precinct one, night side, south.
I was saying, wasn't it on Friday or? Uh, from me that quit. Look, are you saying?
Nah, Rusty, uh, correspondent wants a picture, he's like, never got a picture.
Timing's good. Tom Bro. Forty-two thousand.
There is a cat auction, wanting to be occurring. Around here, two weeks, um.
Pretty late, second or something like that down there at, uh, Steeple.
I think I will return this then and see what the market train.
Okay, we're going with Derek.
I thought it was actually the late, I don't know. Five, seven options later, third.
May the thirtieth?
Third.
Third, okay.
I think the second.
Your brothers is probably four to two.
I had several phone calls from folks that were reporting, getting used for a trade in for new, for a big purchase.
Right, exactly, he's putting in, in that auction.
Yeah.
Mike and Carter. The bid from vehicle equipment company in the amount one hundred and forty-two thousand five. Okay, item number. Discuss, instead of playing maximum or water drainage problem.
Yeah, you've been involved in it too, I showed them the gym because, uh, approached by J T one, about Stephen. Wonder about the drainage problem we had in the recent rains in the, uh, J T's office. Um, it appears we've got some drainage problems underground. The, uh, cleanup tops on these drain pipes out here, one of them popped off, which then they did have a bad pressure on the line. I'm afraid that the leak that we're having may be coming down from the roof, filling in the. The way the water.
Section. And I can't remember how long ago that's been, you Cheryl?
It's been a year ago.
That's been several years ago. Uh, they put a grate board up there on that. That roof, I'm pretty sure, had four drains, that metal section had four drains, took a drain this way and took a drain that way. They put a grate board. West on the south, and I think that there's more water collecting up there on those, these heavy rains. And I know that there's. The jet went in from the curve back this way as far as it could go, and from the clean out that way as far as it could go. It got all those to the curve out there, I mean, it's all glass, and it was having water. Maybe some restriction in there somewhere, but I believe it's delivered more water, there's, there's four of those roof drains, they're grinding them at this point. To go to the curb, I think that is just, all those heavy rains that delivers more water. Andy, Andy's coming here. They ran in. If all that they could detect the breach about the place, about where it came out built, would. Because there might be a break in that line there, which would make sense. In foundation. I'm assuming. Of them, that comes out and building into this property, P B C. Their all dedicated time, uh, for the risk of rain line. I can't remember that ever being replaced or worked on, the risk of rain lines, that's. Material idea.
Like, I can. Since we moved those drains to this one to collect all that water, we're taxing that system, which simply cannot move that much water. And when that pipe backs up, can't get water into the drainage system, that catch turn. Goes straight on down through, I think we eliminated the leak. So what we need to do maybe is run. This way?
I just take.
One reason.
Two reasons.
Just go off of this line, go out to that side.
Go like on this side. Down here. Will it take the office?
Forward. Water.
Corner.
Apparently. Got us all. I don't tell him how. The funny thing is actually be going always through, so it could be, and that's. Now, the way it's combined lately, so. Time when we have problems with. First happen, then we have lots of water collected on that.
So you breathe additional relief on that line, maybe?
Well, it could be, yes, uh, or might, a little bit, maybe a drainage or a drain problem there. If we can, perhaps somebody. Andy, Andy's lunch. They're trying to get an opportunity.
Also. Fish pond underneath that, so.
Yeah. Down here is probably four or. Right.
Maybe, maybe you have a six inch drain.
Come up. That might. Get up to a level where we. I still think we're probably gonna have to. Big outside there. Where our bridge problem is.
We didn't dig all the way to the corner.
Oh, what?
It's been.
In the earth.
Running corner right there. That's what the little blasting. Cleanups, that's what it does for it.
Yeah, yeah.
There's like two of them. Going to the south, I don't, I don't. Right here, and the grate going that way, that's the only way it's working, where it's got the slump to get it going.
Can we increase the diameter of the range? Well, if it comes up, a little bit, a bit, increase that drain line. You know? The leak in there, what else to her, as it.
You just tee, tee up there like you're talking about, just tee it in to leave it exist. And if there's anything that comes up.
With a rounded tee.
Because with the tees that leave, that water will flow past that, past that tee. Starts handling, can handle all of it.
You look at radius tee on there.
Well, it won't be a.
Radius tee, we've got to direct the water out inside.
Get to work whenever that water backs up, it's just backing up into the deal, get a little right on that that tee.
I'll try to notify when her, Andy, calls the back, his agent's up here. I'll try to notify somebody, if we can put together a plan. If there's a place that's to get it, we'll be Mr. Winter.
Probably the other thing is.
Lane boys.
Take the place when that is, is, is when those drains are completely full. I just want to blow that top off. Pressure.
Probably good if we keep that top loose too, not top off.
If we don't have a big right, it goes open. Goes on time, so it'll come out, get the rain. Save your own, save yourself, if I do this.
About what we've just been going on for.
We'll take a hold of water.
Really great, but, um, that's just fine. More discussion there on that? Well, I don't know, we'll discuss that.
This is what I do on the, if they decide to do something, we can bring equipment up here, dig, do the digging stuff, if they want to invest in. That way you's, you definitely.
Remove that.
So what?
We'll have that, our next agenda. Have some answers for them, on a favor. Item number thirteen, issuance of order determining election precinct boundaries, line section forty-two. So, this is kind of cleanup thing, I don't know how long it's been since we've done that, but it caused more, it caused more to be done. March. In April of either the, um, odd number of years or even. Aludes to the population within each precinct, that they're not, not bill. And. Voting precinct, exclamation, of, of, of location. Another various item too, that Lauren and I, we certainly all, we comply, we also. Uh, with forty-three, forty-two point on street one, the next elections. With forty-three, forty-two point on street one, protection, protection scope, I don't know what year took this order. I think we're. All in favor? There is five. Oh, I couldn't remember the last time we've done that, that we get done that, we've done it all. Obviously, probably during a reportion.
Like that, that's the place.
Hope we turn second week. Go first, sit out before that happens.
Get, did you find out anything on that first word?
No, I, I, it's starting to get warmer on this. I'm going to get up to some hundred degrees. We get kicked out.
We don't.
We'll get something far that can get to you, what you wish.
Is that anything?
Okay, five, five dollars a month. That's happening.
Yeah.
No wax in there? Okay, I.
Do you think we could take it in this shop a little before earlier?
Well. I, you know, I don't think we could do it in. It doesn't constitute to the level of an urgency that you would do to our being. I gave my knowledge. So we can get it all put together, hosted. Around thirty, it's. Only thirty, forty. Thirty-four. Look. Say. Well, since you learned of it at twelve thirty. At twelve thirty, we have been wanting. How do you look that day back?
Who else do you want in on that?
Just Mr. Test. Walk through. Thank you. We're in a fest of great law. We'll have some. Coming back, you're open, thank you again. You know, I'll read.
I'd be worried. I just need to know.